With that, I would like to call to order the April 14th, 2022, meeting of the Louisville Planning Commission with a roll call, please.
Chair Bronis.
Here.
Vice Chair Hefner.
Here.
Commissioner Krantz.
Here.
Commissioner Osterman.
Here.
Commissioner Deal.
Here.
Commissioner Howe.
Here.
Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Thank you all very much. Obviously, this is our first in-person meeting since COVID, and it is great to be back. So, thank you all for making it possible. With that, then, we'll move into an approval of this evening's agenda. The motion, please.
I would so move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Then we have a question of minutes from last month's meeting. We have a motion to approve those.
I do have one correction.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I was not present at the March 10th meeting.
Ah, right. And that did show up.
Can't vouch for it.
Listed you on there as being present. Thank you. All right. With one correction noted, a motion to approve the minutes.
I would so move.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. The minutes are approved. And then, actually, this is another portion of our meeting here where if anybody was here who wanted to speak to an issue that's not on this evening's agenda, and if anybody's feeling like you want to do a little extemporaneous speech, you're more than welcome to if you have some -- we prefer that it's relevant, but it doesn't have to be. The rules are such that free speech rules, so anybody could say anything if they wanted to. But I gather nobody wants to take me up on that. Oh, I should let our friends at home know that we are at, what, 10, 9, 11? We have 11 students from Monarch here with us at this point in the meeting. So, all right, then, seeing no public comment for items not on the agenda, we will...
Do we need public comment from online?
Yeah, right? We do need to check if there's any online public comments for items not on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Give us one minute, and we're going to check.
Okay.
Check the audience here.
Thanks for putting that out, yes. Very much so.
There's no one in the audience.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. With that, then, we will move into our items of new business. Excuse me. I will now open the public hearing on the request for an amendment to Louisville Municipal Code regarding mailed public notices. The purpose of the hearing is receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before Planning Commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the Planning Commission to staff. In this case, the staff is the applicant. After these presentation, this presentation, members of the public who have joined the meeting by computer or telephone may speak regarding the application, and those in person are also welcome to speak. Kind of have to update my script. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to use the raise hand function if participating by computer or *9 if calling in by telephone. Alternately, if you were participating in person, you would fill out a card with your name, address, and phone number on it. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing, and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The Planning Commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing none. Do we have proper notification?
Yes, we have proper notification.
Great. And usually, we -- is that our current? Yes? It's just an affirmative?
Affirmative.
Yeah, we'll bring up the PowerPoint here. We'll ask Dave if he can bring up the presentation from the podium.
And while we're doing that, do we have any Planning Commission members have any disclosures regarding this item? No? Thank you. All right. Great. And Commissioner Deal, I can't see you anymore, but maybe you can confirm you don't have any disclosures?
No disclosures.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Okay. There we go. Much easier.
Excellent.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Elizabeth K. Marketti. I'm Senior Planner on behalf of Louisville Planning Staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. The item before you tonight is Resolution Number 6, Series 2022, which recommends approval of a draft ordinance that amends titles 15, 16, and 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code. The proposed amendments are initiated by city staff and change responsibility for accomplishing mailed notice of public hearings and of certain land use applications under review from city staff to the land use applicants. The item before you was correctly noticed according to current Louisville public hearing notification standards. I will explain the background of the proposed amendments, summarize those amendments, and offer a recommendation. Without further ado, let's start with the background. Since 1975, Louisville has adopted and then amended the standards for mailed notice of public hearings and of two land use application types six times, most recently in 2015. The people historically responsible for accomplishing all aspects of public notification efforts have been city planning staff. The 2021 Marshall Fire has forced planning staff to reevaluate workload responsibilities and priorities in order to respond appropriately to the community's needs, in order to maintain a high level of customer service to fire survivors and to land use applicants. It's recently been estimated that planning staff needs anywhere from eight to 24 hours per week to accomplish the mailed notice efforts. The work is so labor-intensive and time-consuming that current staff have needed to come to the office on weekends just to handle the mailed notification workloads. When an underestimate of the cost of staff's time is used, this comes out to approximately $9,600 to $28,800 annually in labor costs for the city. So, to complete the discussion on the background of this request, staff researched the question of whether Louisville would be breaking new ground in the city planning and land entitlement industry and discovered that the answer is no. Already, the counties of Boulder and Douglas and the cities of Broomfield, Wheatridge, Westminster, Arvada, Aurora, and Englewood are currently requiring the same mailed notification standards that staff is proposing tonight. What is being proposed is not unusual in the metro region. Now, for the specifics of the proposed amendments, there are two case types that require mailed notice to surrounding neighbors when a complete application has been submitted and reviewed by city staff. Those are an administrative special review use and an administrative variance. In both instances, staff will create the content of the notice along with the mailing list and give both to the applicant for their use. The mailing list will be generated using the Boulder County's assessors database, and the land use applicant will be required to provide proof to staff that they accomplished the mailed notice. The land use applicant will certify that the mailing occurred by using a simple form that staff will create. The applicant will execute the form and give it to staff along with a copy of the original mailing list, all of which will be added to the project file. There are also 12 case types that require mailed notice to surrounding neighbors in preparation for a public hearing. For properties considered historic, the case types are landmark, alteration certificate, and demolition permit. The other case types are plat, minor plat, zoning or rezoning, planned unit development, special review use, administrative special review use, variance, and floodplain development permit. For the record, you're about to hear language. That sounds very familiar. Again, in all instances, staff will create the content of the notice along with the mailing list and give both to the applicant for their use. The mailing list will be generated using the Boulder County's assessors database. The land use applicant will be required to provide proof to staff that they accomplished the mailed notice by the required deadline. Applicants will certify that the mailing occurred by using a simple form that staff will create. Prior to the hearings, applicants will execute the form and give it to staff along with a copy of the original mailing list, which will be added to the project file. Should the proposed amendments occur, staff resources and energy will be freed up to allow high-quality customer service and other core work efforts to take precedent. Land use applicants will be empowered to accomplish the mailed notice, and the public will still be notified of certain ongoing land use applications and of all upcoming public hearings. To be clear, there are no changes being proposed to the standards for published and posted notice for any case type or public hearing. The proposed amendments represent a more cost-effective and efficient way to conduct business while ensuring clear paths for public participation in public processes. Therefore, staff recommends approval -- rather, staff recommends that the commission approve Resolution 6, Series 2022, recommending approval of amendments to titles 15, 16, and 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code regarding mailed notice of public hearings and of certain land use applications under review. This concludes my presentation, and again, thank you so much for this opportunity, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We do open it up now for questions of staff. Commissioner Wollin?
Thank you, Elizabeth K. I have one question about just the clarity around the first sentence with, I'm just going to read it, mailed notice. At least 15 days prior to any public hearing which requires notification by mail, the applicant shall provide notice by first-class mail. And I'm just, my question is, is it clear to people that that's, that they need to send it, or it needs to be delivered by that? Could you talk through that?
Sure. That's actually pretty standard industry language.
Okay.
That is, you'll see that language almost verbatim if you open up any code in the metro area.
Okay.
That's land use applicant. And if there's any confusion, staff is entirely prepared to do lots of hand-holding, as it were, and help any applicant understand, you know, here's what this means, and I know, offer them any resources that they may need if there's any confusion.
What does it mean? Does it mean mailed or...?
Right. Mailed by first-class mail. Yes.
Oh, so that's, it's sending it.
Postmarked 15 days prior.
Exactly. Exactly. They must send by first-class mail notification to the neighbors. Yes.
All right. Thank you, Elizabeth K. Thanks for the presentation.
My pleasure. Sure thing.
Yep. Just to be clear, it is, it just has to be postmarked by that 15-day date.
Right.
And it can arrive after that date, even though it's not 15 days before the hearing.
Great. Thank you. Any additional questions? Yes, please.
I guess my question is just a follow-up to that one. So, I'm hearing that as long as it's postmarked by the date, in the language in the document, I also noticed that it referenced a notarized certification confirming that the mailing was accomplished by the required date.
So, right. There is no required date to accomplish the mailing for the two case types that are to notify neighbors when the case is simply submitted and been reviewed. However, there are always date deadlines for those items that are heard by the public. So, that's not changing in the code. We're not changing the 15-day prior deadline to accomplish the mailing. That is not a change. And the certification is going to occur on that simple form that I mentioned staff is going to draw up, a very simple, one-page form. I fill in the blank, accomplish the mailed notice for case, fill it in, by date, fill it in, signature, notary block. That's, I used a similar form in other jurisdictions. It's very simple. They need to attach the mailing list to it, staple it, fill it out, sign it, get it notarized, and deliver it to staff prior to the hearing. So, that's the process that we're anticipating. Does that answer?
Thank you.
It does. Thank you. It was just to understand if the notarization incorporated additional steps or administrative burden.
In theory, yes. It's something that we have not asked land use applicants to do prior, but if it's any assurance, reassurance, it's a standard procedure used by other jurisdictions when they do a process like this, because there needs to be a way for the city to get some level of guarantee and assurance that this land use applicant has operated in good faith and done what they said they were going to do. And so, that notarization sounds slightly more burdensome, but it's not, it's not unusual.
I would just add, we have multiple notary staff here at City Hall, so any applicant can come in, and most, any day and any time, there's going to be staff here that can notarize that form.
Commissioner Krantz?
It was, it's great to see something that's going to cost the city less and help, help you work better towards the fire recovery efforts. And I just have, like, four real simple questions that are probably a little bit broad, but because I don't really understand the whole procedure, it might just be for my own edification. But one of the things is picking up on what Allison said, how, is there a situation where you may have 500 letters to send out, and this would be a huge burden for a small project, say, a homeowner who's looking for a variance or something like that? Is there a case where it would be a huge burden to them? What would be the cost of the mailing, and how many, like, how many letters would you send out?
Okay, so, okay, so here's how the process works. Staff relies on a map. It is the Boulder County Assessor's Map, and it has a function whereby you type in an address and you direct, you direct the map to draw a circle, a circumference, like, all the way around with the site in the center, and you tell it how many feet you want that circle to go from that center point. So, in our case, Louisville requires everybody within 500 feet of a place. And so, the database will pull every mailing address, and in this case, in the city of Louisville, in most instances, we are only mailing to land owners, so it's not to every owner and leasor. So, it's only to land owners within that 500-foot radius. And then, you click another button on the map, and it generates a spreadsheet for you of every single address with the, as far as the Boulder County Assessor understands, the ownership name to be for, say, an entity. Entities all the time own land. It'll be the entity name, the mailing address of the ownership, not necessarily of the site. If it's being rented, it'll go to the owner in, you know, Montana, if that's where the owner is. And so, we will get that list. And so, when you think about the city of Louisville, it's got a pretty varied land use pattern, right? Yes. So, there aren't a lot of very high-density areas around the city. More often than not, you're going to get a fairly short list, because when you think about how many owned parcels exist within 500 feet of any given site, the chances are fairly slim that you're going to end up with 500. If you're in a community like Denver, if you're in a community like, you know, Lakewood or Aurora that really does have high density, you can get very long lists. Yes. I would say in Louisville, it's less likely that you're going to get very lengthy lists. So, so... An important aspect of the way that we've written this language is that we are giving the applicant the option about how to, what, what form the notice needs to take. They could put it on an eight-and-a-half piece of paper and put it in an envelope and pay the cost to mail a #10 envelope. They could put it in a manila envelope and pay even more. Or, they could use the content we give them and fit it on a postcard. If it fits on a postcard, they could save a little bit of money and mail it on a postcard. So, the price is going to vary depending on the approach that the applicant wants to take and where they're located in the city. So, it's going to, it's really going to vary on a case-by-case basis.
So, am I right in thinking that it might be about, about a dollar per mailing with postage and envelope and printing, that it could cost about $500 for somebody who wants to put in extra on a historic preservation application in Louisville?
Again, it's very much, in theory...
Theory, would that be an overestimate or an underestimate?
It's a possibility. It's really hard to estimate. Looking at a map, thinking about where the city has historic properties or may have historic properties, and what's happening within 500 feet of those properties, given that the predominant downtown character is historic, thinking about this area of central Louisville, it's not very high density. I would be surprised that you would get somebody looking to landmark a property that would have 500 different lots within 500 feet of it. A typical block is 300 or so feet, if that helps you.
Yeah.
A typical length is anywhere from 300 to 600 feet. Louisville has nice, kind of compact blocks, if that helps.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify.
Historically, the mailing costs have been paid by whom?
We do charge applicants, I think, a flat rate. If I, if I understand, Rob, you might, I might want to defer to Rob to how this has worked historically.
Yeah, there is a public notice fee that we put on all land use applications. It does not cover the typical cost. I don't know what it is off the top of my head. But I think the, I think somebody brought up historic preservation applications. I think that's a really good thing to bring up. We typically don't charge application fees for historic preservation applications because we're trying to really promote that program. So, that could be, you know, it'd be good to get the commission's input on if you think maybe that's something that we should keep in-house. You know, we do, that might be one of our highest burden areas. We do a lot, you know, especially recently, we've done a lot of mailings for historic preservation. But I understand the sentiment that maybe we don't want to have historic preservation applicants pay, because we don't make them pay for any other application type in an effort to promote historic preservation.
Thank you. I was just trying to get an idea of what the burden would be on the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, you know, some, we do have some mailings that are in the hundreds, some types of applications. I'd say most mailings are, you know, more, you know, 20, 30, 40 type of addresses. That's more common.
Any additional questions, staff? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. Just one more thought. Would it be possible, just as a long-term thing, for the city to give residents an option to opt into some kind of an email notification as, at some point in, during our residency, for us to just go online and not have to, to have another? I mean, I don't know the details of it, but just something to think about for the future.
Yeah, that would be an interesting question for the city attorney.
And there are jurisdictions that do that, that have established sort of a massive mailing list. You know, sign up here on the city's website if you want to receive notification of upcoming hearings. So, that becomes a fourth method of notification. And yeah, I think it's imminently doable. It's a question of, you know, we, we kept the scope of this fairly narrow. That's sort of, that's something we have talked about in staff, that, you know, there's a variety of different technology being used now to notify members of the public. And so, we wanted to take this baby step, but I think that's something we can certainly consider.
Yeah. We have a lot of analog residents still that are very involved, and I know would still really appreciate, not only the mailings, but actually the postings that we put on the message boards. There are a few residents who still check those on a regular basis.
Please.
And Commissioner, when you get a moment, Commissioner Deal, I know you can't see him, is raising his hand as well.
Okay, great. Commissioner Moline, then we'll, are you able to jump over there when we need to?
I was just going to say, the assessor site is very familiar to me, and it has, you know, it's really easy to run a buffer. And just for instance, I just ran a 500-foot buffer on the City Hall property, and 172 properties showed up. So, just to give a little sense of it.
Great. And Commissioner Deal, we're working on getting, no, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I'm able to speak. Elizabeth, I'm just curious. Obviously, we're moving the responsibility to the applicant, and my question would be if it's determined that the applicant, even though they did notarize and certify, did not do what they said they did, what would the consequence be with regard to the applicant and the application? Or maybe even if it, if it went all the way through to City Council and was approved?
Well, is the question, what if they did not fill out the form?
Oh, no. What if they did not actually mail it?
If we found out, even though they had certified and notarized, and we found out that they actually had not accomplished the mailing, though they said they did.
Well, I think if we found out before they went to City, like, for example, if we found out before things were finalized, we'd make them go back through the hearing process again. I think if they had gone through the whole process, signed their documents, and they were recorded, we would be talking to the city attorney at that point. I assume we'd have to go back through the process again and to rectify that issue for sure, one way or another.
One of, one of the things that, that we've talked about internally is perhaps requiring the applicants to use the City Hall as the return address for every item mailed, so that the city staff will become aware, oops, this address is wrong, and hey, they actually accomplished the mailing. Because in almost every mailing, there's vacancies of properties. There's a lag between a deed being recorded and the assessor office being caught up, and so there are always returned items. There's always a handful. And so, if we required the applicant to use, like I said, City Hall, maybe, maybe the planning department as the return address, we would, we would, if we received nothing and, if nothing bounced back from the post office, we would actually start to suspect that something may have gone sideways. But when we start seeing items returned as vacant or can't deliver as addressed, that's good assurance that, that they, they made a good-faith effort. There you are.
That makes a lot of sense.
Any additional questions, Commissioner Deal, or actually, anybody at this point? Seeing none. I'll now open up a public comment portion of the public hearing. We have no written comments on this, is my understanding, that have been submitted. All right. Do we have any online participants? If we can confirm?
There are no online participants right now.
All right. This is a time when if somebody was here in the meeting and they wanted to talk on this particular issue, they would be welcomed up to talk, but seeing none, we will move on and see if there's any, do you have, do you have a closing statement at all? All right.
Staff just again, again recommends approval of Resolution 6, Series 2022, and again, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. With that, then, I will now close the public hearing, and then Planning Commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Any thoughts? Who would like to begin?
I can start.
All right, great. Why don't we just work our way down the line on this one for the...
I won't say much, other than it seems like a very good thing to free up staff time for more important items and... time for more important items and I, I like the idea of in the future, maybe revisiting the idea of an opt-in electronic notice. Can you, oh, am I not close enough?
Yeah, closer. You should be able to hear a little bit through the speaker.
And I, I wonder if our in-person audience is familiar with the idea of first, first-class mail. Future generations may not be.
So, I'm, I'm in support of this and, yeah, really in support of this so that, that staff can get to work on other more pressing things. And I'm also encouraged that this is a, a common practice and that applicants that are working in the metro area are going to be used to this procedure. So I'm strongly in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Same for me. I'm in favor of this. I think that it makes sense to free up staff time. I don't have any concerns about the proposal.
Although I, I'm concerned about the burden, financial burden that maybe applicants have to incur to do this, I think that the, the time is most useful that we're trying to open up for the city. So I think that that outweighs. And I think that also it's important for citizens to understand that although there is a burden for the cost, there are people that can help and resources that can, can help the applicant within the city process. So it's not like you're doing it on your own.
Yeah, I also think it's a great idea. And just to add to the discussion, from my own experience, working with city staff, it seems like, I have, I trust that the people we have are, are going to handhold people and not make this a huge burden because I know that we've got, we have such a good reputation for helping the public out when they have questions and getting them through what might seem like a complicated process.
Great, thank you. I also find myself in favor of the motion at this point. I think it is great to be able to free up city staff time in that way. I'm not actually concerned about passing the cost on to the applicant. I actually think that's kind of a fair way of doing it. As, I don't know that really it should necessarily fall upon the taxpayer to ensure that level of participation in democracy. So, slight difference there, but with that then, we, I would entertain a motion.
Sure, I would move for approval of Resolution Number 6, Series 2022, a resolution recommending approval of an ordinance amending titles 15, 16, and 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning mailed notices of public hearings and certain land use applications under review.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Chair Hefner.
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Deal.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Chair Bronis.
Yes.
With that, the motion carries. Thank you very much. With that then, we will move into our next item of business. Not sure how to hand off here, okay. And Commissioner Deal, right now, so we don't have you on screen, so please just kind of verbally, if you need to, jump in and let us know.
Will do.
Thanks. All right, then I will repeat my script. I will now open the public hearing on a request for an ordinance allowing alternative to installing electric vehicle charging infrastructure for Marshall Fire rebuilding. Resolution 7, Series 2022. Purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the Planning Commission. Procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the Planning Commission to staff. After this presentation, members of the public who have joined this meeting by computer or telephone or in person may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak and is online, please use the raise hand function if you're participating by computer or star nine if calling in by telephone. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. The purpose of public comment is receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The Planning Commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing none. Do we have notification?
Sure, yes. Good evening, Chair Bronis, members of the commission, Rob Zuccaro with the Planning and Building Department. For public notice certification, notice of this hearing was published in the Boulder Daily Camera, the March 27, 2022 edition. It was posted in all required locations, March 25, 2022. There were no mailings because none were required, so no staff time or money was spent on a mailing. All right, I will, if it's okay with the chair, I will go ahead and proceed. So what's before you this evening is a resolution recommending approval of an ordinance that would provide an opt-out to Louisville Municipal Code Section 172170. So this is a recently adopted requirement for electric vehicle charging infrastructure. So back in October of last year, the city adopted a series of energy efficiency codes, including the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code. So we, we updated and upgraded from the 2018 code. And we also adopted the RC Net Zero Appendix for residential construction, not commercial. So it's the 2021 IECC and then RC Net Zero for residential. Included in that ordinance was a requirement for EV charging infrastructure for all new development. That would be commercial or residential. So any new residential building or commercial building, there was a certain number of EV charging stations, ready, capable stations, and we can go into the definitions of that. But basically, for a residence, you had to have capable and ready, which means you had to have one where you had the actual electric line going to a junction box or a plug or an actual charger, and then a capable, which was just conduit going from your circuit box and then having capacity in your circuit box. So you had to have one of each per residence. So that's what was adopted for residential. So I think as you've probably followed, the City Council recently adopted an ordinance that allows those rebuilding residential structures that were destroyed or damaged in the Marshall Fire, when they're rebuilding, they can choose to opt out of building to the 2021 IECC and the Net Zero Appendix. They, it doesn't mean they don't have to build any energy efficiency code. They have to go back to the code that was in place before October of last year, so they have to build to the 2020, or sorry, the 2018 IECC. The reason that this is being reviewed on a separate schedule is because the electric vehicle charging is in the zoning code. And so anything in the zoning code has to go to the Planning Commission before City Council. Everything else I just talked about was in the building code, so we were able to take that to City Council on a little bit faster schedule after some study sessions with Council where they gave us direction to draft the ordinance. So that was a, so there was the opt-out provision adopted earlier this month, April 4th, so it's going into effect here in a few weeks. And so we are, again, running this code separately. I want to talk a little bit about the opt-out provisions as we drafted it. So the, the ordinance that's in front of you simply references to the building code and there's a, there's a lot of criteria in the building code section that was adopted on April 4th that basically, where you have to qualify if you want to opt out. And one of the things is, is you, if you're rebuilding and you want to opt out, number one, you have to have resided in the home on December 30th when the fire occurred. So if you sell your house and there's a developer or a new homeowner wanting to rebuild on the lot, they do not qualify for the opt-out. So it's only residents who were living in the house or own the house, I shouldn't just say living. So if they own the house, even if it was for a rental, they are allowed to opt out. The opt-out language says that you have to have a financial hardship based on underinsurance. And we, just to be clear, we're not requiring that anybody submit to the city financial information. It's going to be a checkbox on the application. But we do want people to certify, and there's a few reasons. Some people still want to build, certainly to the 2021 code. Some people may want to put in electric charging infrastructure. Some will want to build even to the RC Net Zero Appendix. There are incentives available, specifically through Excel is one notable incentive. So if, if a homeowner builds to the 2021 code instead of the 2018, there's a $700, $500 rebate available to them. So we structured the code so that our base code is still the 2021. So if somebody chooses to build to that code, they're eligible for the incentive. There's also something in most homeowners, homeowners insurance called law and ordinances insurance, which allows insurance proceeds for code upgrades. So by keeping the base code and allowing opt-out, this does allow homeowners, it doesn't guarantee it, but they can work with their insurance agency and they, it's more likely that they'll be eligible for that law and ordinances coverage, which is usually a percentage of your coverage to replace the home. So for this ordinance, because it's an opt-out, if they choose to build under the adopted code, they could approach still their insurance and say, hey, I had to pay some extra money to upgrade my electrical panel, to put in the electric vehicle charging, and there could be money available. So just some background on that. So again, this would apply, this wouldn't apply to the, we do have some commercial rebuilds, this wouldn't apply to the commercial rebuilds. They'd still have to put in the electric charging infrastructure that's required. This just applies to the residential rebuilds. And as you've probably heard, there's a pretty, where there's a significant amount of underinsurance. And so I think in, in deference to that, I think that there's, we, you know, the city's decided to provide these options and consider providing these options to help homeowners afford to be able to rebuild and stay in the community. So with that, staff is recommending approval of this resolution, which would recommend approval of this ordinance to City Council, allowing an opt-out for residential reconstruction for structures that are significantly damaged or destroyed by the Marshall Fire. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. And actually, before we jump into questions, there was a question of, do we have any disclosures from Planning Commission members? And we've discussed this in the past, that people who are impacted by the fires, you can share that if you choose to, but that does not disqualify anybody from participating in that, at this time. So I don't, I don't think we have any disclosures at that point, though. All right, thank you very much. Questions of staff?
Yeah, I, I just have one clarification on the hardship language, which is, I think I just understood you to say that you have to certify that the hardship is because of underinsurance. And I'm just, I'm looking at the language here and I'm not sure I see that. Do you?
Yeah, let, let me pull it up here on my computer up here.
I'm, I'm on page 36 of the PDF, if that helps.
Well, while we give him a moment to pull that up, do we have any questions? Well, no. He'll have to answer those two, right?
So the, I, I, give me just a minute to look it up and if there's more questions or discussion. But it is, it's not in the ordinance before you, but it's going to be in the ordinance that Council adopted on April 4th, which is included in the packet. The language is in there, so I'll find it.
Okay.
Yep.
Why don't we just take a-
Maybe that's my confusion.
-a quick five-minute break? We'll pause right now and give everybody a chance, if you need to use the restrooms, you can do that.
No, it's, it's, it's in the ordinance. Let me just go to the, it's in, it's going to be in ordinance 1825. Yeah. Yep, it's in ordinance 18, yeah, it's, it's further down. 1825. And they usually go by this, these, like, blue numbers down there? And I think, I think it's in there twice.
Great, thank you all. If we can call the meeting back to order. And I believe you have some language for us.
Yes, I do, thank you. Yeah, so I pulled up the page of ordinance 1825, which was included in the packet. So this is the ordinance approved on April 4th, which this would actually reference back to, which is the, here's the, when you look at that ordinance, it talks about, you know, these are the, this is how you opt out, and you've got one, two, three, and four. This is where it talks about you have to have owned the home. You can also apply up to three years, I forgot to mention that. You have three years to apply for your building permit to qualify as well. So even if you own the home and it's- for your building permit to qualify as well. So even if you own the home and it's after three years and you're rebuilding, you would not qualify. You'd have to install the EV charging. But here's the language number four related to the hardship being connected to the insurance.
Thank you. That answers my only question.
No, thank you very much. Additional questions? Yes, Commissioner Mullin?
Rob, I have one. And I guess, I don't know if it'll be fair or not, but did city staff asked, like, what is the cost estimate of these kinds of improvements? Is that hard to, is it hard to kind of generalize about that?
Well, so when you look at all the improvements together, so you're looking at the IECC. So we did a report on that, actually. We had, we used several consultants and consult, and worked with lots of industry groups and actual local builders and put together a series of estimates
Okay.
Based on different scenarios. And I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but we didn't do anything just for the EV charging, but for the IECC and the net zero, we had a series of estimates. And, you know, one of the things I want to say about the net zero, you know, when you're going to the whole net zero, one of the most expensive things was solar, whether you were enrolling in a, because what you have to do is you have to build your house to a certain efficiency standard and get rate, it's called a HERS rating. And so there's a stricter rating if you do the net zero code. And then you have to supplement with renewable energy like solar or geothermal. So the most obvious thing is a solar. So you could put solar on your house. There's usually, to get all the way down to the net zero rating, there's usually not enough room on the house. So you end up having to enroll in, say, a solar farm, for example. Those actually come at a cost, or putting the solar on your house is what we found. One of the things that Mayor Stolzmann actually worked really hard on was getting a solar farm to provide at no additional cost to anybody impacted by the Marshall fire enrollment in the solar farm. So they don't have to pay any premiums. It's the same rate. So this still exists, even though there's still this opt out option. So, but to answer you, to try to get to the answer your question, I don't have the number up in front of me, but, and there was a lot of debate, but it was something in the range of just, just, so if you take the solar out of it, because that was taken care of, I think it was something close to 20, I think it was something close to 20,000 to do the whole net, to do the 2021 IECC to get to the net zero. If you're just doing the 2021 IECC, but not the net zero rating, it's quite a bit less. That was something like less than 10,000, I think. I apologize, I don't have the exact numbers. Commissioner Krantz might even have the exact numbers. Yeah. And we could pull that up for you, but I think, and then I think the point is too, that what we talked about is the, the actual number is what your contractor or your builder tells you what it's going to be.
Right.
And so we, and it depends on the size of your house. But we did a lot of modeling of a standard average, I'm going to say an average house of those that were lost in the fire. So, you know, it's, I think it's going to range, it's, so it really ranges. But I think what we're seeing is a lot of people who are trying to just build the 21 code and take advantage of that Excel rebate. You know, I think it's, you're going to be in that range if you're just going to the 18 and 21, to the 21 code for the average home.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a very complicated issue. The question you asked may not be as simple as the answer that Rob presented, because there are a lot of, lot of issues there. And to base everything off of one study, I think is simplistic. However, back to the case that we're talking about, from what I understand, a typical house outlet, and so I'm going back to the requirements that we would make for an electric ready car, capable spot, because that's what really we're talking about, right? What would a resident need to do in order to make an EV charging station? And in most cases, this will be residential, I think. But there are some commercial that have been affected by the Marshall fire. So the typical residential outlet is a 15 or 20 amp, ampere. And according to the requirements for making an electrical vehicle capable space, you need a 40 amp. So when we talk about the costs, and I think maybe you can, you can clarify, maybe for this particular discussion point, what the cost is for a resident to have a electric vehicle capable space. I think there's a lot more discussion that has been, that has taken place over what the big cost is for the house and other things. But just for this capable space, it seems to me like you're just going from a 20 amp to a 40 amp, which may not be a significant cost. I guess I don't know what that exact cost is.
Yes. And I don't know the exact cost either, and this is a good point. And so I know we keep talking about all of these things grouped together, and then you could try to isolate just the cost of a charging station. And so, you know, there is certain, I would say the cost of getting a, you know, a 40 amp, 200 volt, 200 volt circuit breaker to put in your panel, and then running a line or running a conduit is a very minimal cost. In the totality of all these codes that we've been talking about, our codes, and I didn't talk about this, but we actually had a requirement for electric ready infrastructure. So in anticipation of moving away from any gas, you know, fossil fuel infrastructure, we were requiring that you build to be electric ready for your whole house. So that's your furnace, your cooking facilities, your water heater. And the real costs associated with that tend to be on your, you know, bringing the service into your house. Most of our, most of the homes were probably like 150 amp services to the home. In order to go all electric, you might, we're anticipating you'd need, you know, over 300. Most people would actually maybe just do 400 amp service. And so going from 150, the cost of 150 to a 400 amp service, which is way more than just the vehicle charging station. I mean, you could, you know, you can often just, if you, if you wanted to accommodate that within a lower amperage and you're not doing everything else, honestly, it's probably just a few hundred dollar upgrade is, would be a kind of a high level estimate. Just to mention this too, but if you, if you do go all electric, one of the savings that is often mentioned is you don't have to plum gas into your house. So you save that as well.
But I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're talking about tonight is just the EV.
It's just the EV section. Yeah.
So it's a complicated discussion if you, if you raise the house. Mark my words, because I've been living it. But to talk simply about the electric vehicle, I think what we're focusing in on here today is that you have to increase the ampere and the volt circuitry, kind of doubling that in your house. One that, and for a residential, from what I understand, you have to have, you would have to have one electric capable space and one electric vehicle ready space. And that determine, that's determined by where the circuit terminates. So in my mind, it seems, it seems like the cost, and I don't know this for sure, but it seems like the cost would be minimal for that upgrade.
Yeah.
The other
It would be.
So I guess I say minimal in the perspective, of course, a hundred dollars is not minimal to a lot of people who are rebuilding their houses, but
Yeah, the actual installation would be minimal.
But I would say hundreds, maybe rather than thousands, just, just so the citizens listening or watching understand the scope of what we're looking at. The other thing that I want to point out to everyone is that it's easy to say you can opt out because of financial, or I'm sorry, not financial hardship, but opt out because of under insurance. The second question is, how does the insurance react to that? Because the insurance that are giving you the money in the end. So you can opt out, and I don't know how opting out of the 2021 and appendix RC, if you opt out of that with your house, how that affects if you can opt out of this. I don't know if the insurance, of course, I'm not an insurance person. I don't know if they would say, well, if you opt out of one, you got to opt out of both. Now, listen to me carefully. There are some, there are many people who have insurance and want this coverage and, and may not opt out. There are some people that will opt out because they don't have that insurance and they don't want that coverage. And then there's everybody in between. So I think it's complicated. I'm not sure just because you opt out, that means that you won't do it. And just because you opt out of one of the house, I don't know if, how the insurance would react if you opt out to this then, or if you don't opt out to this. Let's say you opt out to the house and you don't opt out to this. Well, then how does their insurance react to that? They say, wait a second, you can't have your cake and eat it too. You got to opt out to both of them, and we're not going to reimburse you for that ordinance of law for your house or this. So we have to be very careful about this, because if we say you can opt out, and I don't, I don't know what the ramifications are, if you follow me there.
Yeah. Yeah. And to be clear, we didn't, there's not a separate opt out option just for the EV charging. If you decide to opt out of the 2021 code and build to the 2018, you are opted out of this EV charging as well, the way we have it drafted. So you'd probably lose any chance to try to claim the law and ordinances coverage.
Chair Brownice, Commissioner Howe, are you done? Or did you want to continue?
I'm all done.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, Rob, I'll just, from my, my read of this, and please, please comment on this. The city council has already debated this issue of whether or not we want to allow citizens, they want to allow citizens to opt out. And obviously, they chose, the answer is yes. You know, we, we as a city want, allow citizens to opt out. And it, it seems to me that this, this resolution before us is just kind of aligning the code to that decision, right? And it just had to be, it just had to come through planning because it was part of zoning versus building. Is that accurate?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a little bit of a yes. You, I think you described that accurately, but I don't want to speculate on what council may or may not do. I think you, you know, I, I understand there could, somebody could choose to make a distinction just on this item. And we realize that. But generally, the direction we've been given from council, I would say, is to provide this opt out option. And this is part of that. There hasn't been any direction from council to separate this out. So as from a staff level, we've assumed it's included in council's direction to, you know, to be included in the opt out.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any additional questions of staff at this point? We will get into even more deliberations in a little bit here, but questions of staff?
I have another, I have another question. Just for clarification, so this is part of, and so I'm asking about this because when you opt in or opt out, it could have ramifications on this particular part. So this is, if you were to opt out of the 2021 ECC, that's the all-electric, you would be opting out automatically of this electric vehicle charging ready and
Capable.
Capable.
Yes, exactly. And we've simply said in the ordinance that, you know, charging stations shall not be required for building permits issued pursuant to the 2018 edition of the IECC. So that's the language put in the zoning code, which then anybody who gets a building permit pursuant to that code is opt, would not have to, is not required to put this in, this type of infrastructure in.
So what's the benefit of having this? If this is not a separate item, what, why are we bringing this up as a separate item if that's included in the 2021 IECC?
Yeah. The reason is, is when we adopted the IECC, that lives in Title 15 Building and Construction, which is, you know, our building code. And we decided to draft this within the zoning code for various reasons. But it was all kind of one package of ordinances that came through last October. We actually had a lot of discussion back then about should we put it in the zoning code? We easily could have just put it in the building code and not put it in the zoning code. And, you know, there were various reasons, including we just wanted, you know, it's easier for our developers, it's more upfront for them to understand what the requirement is. So we wanted it to live in the zoning code. But it was all part of the package and discussion of, excuse me, electrif, you know, what we were trying to achieve with supporting electrification, electric infrastructure, getting rid of fossil fuel infrastructure.
So this is specific to the zoning code?
This, yeah. So we, we ended up putting it in the zoning code rather than the building code. And so it requires this extra step. And it's, it's not that we, you know, so but again, you know, the, the cost, when we, when we've been studying cost, even back in October, or now, it's always, we've been looking at it as the whole package. And that's why we're, it's a little confusing, because we're separating out this little piece, which in and of itself probably has a fairly small cost relative to everything else.
So one more question. If, let's say, I'm just hypothetically thinking of a situation where someone opts out. Let's say we don't pass this, and there's no option to opt out. So the zoning requirements remain. How then do you, I mean, we're kind of forced our hand on this, right? Because if you opt, if, if someone affected by the Marshall fire opts out of the 2021 ICC, but yet this remains intact, there's a contradiction there.
Yeah. I mean, it would, there is a little bit of a contradiction, but if this weren't adopted, every new home that was rebuilt would have to put in one ready and one capable. And then so, you know, there's, there's a cost. I think where it could create a cost is if somebody has to upgrade their panel, you know, if somebody's, you know, when a building permit comes in, we require that the actual service to the home gets sized based on the actual load demand. And so, you know, there's, in some instances, this won't change the amperage that goes to your house. And there's no big cost. In some cases, it might bump you up to a bigger panel. And there could be a more significant cost, maybe in the thousands rather than the hundreds. We don't know. It's going to affect different people differently, depending on the size of your house. And, you know, if you're going to have a hot tub and, you know, whatever else in your house.
Any additional questions for Rob at this time? Question? Yep?
I'm sorry, not a question, but I just wanted to apologize because I'm getting used to meeting procedures. And I was showing Commissioner Howe the costs estimates that were on the study. And I realized that I wasn't sharing that with everybody. So my apologies.
Oh, great.
I just wanted to clarify what I was
You want to, you want to.
Yeah, you, could you tell us?
I was just sure. If you build, if you build to the 2021 IECC codes and you go with a natural gas building, your costs can be, one builder estimated 1,900, another estimated 100. But if you're going to go the, it looks like to me, if you go the all-electric option, they're estimating no costs for the additional EV spaces. Does that make sense? I'm looking at the
I believe that that is a public document, right? So it's, that's been published by the city.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, I said yes, the natural gas.
Right. So, so within that study, there were a series of line items related to all the code upgrades that would be required under the adopted code. And so we were, previously, we were talking about the total cost of all upgrades. So I think Commissioner Krantz has pulled out a line item specific
Or EV spaces.
To EV charging spaces, which
One EV ready and one EV capable space.
Yeah. So if you're, yeah. So if you're already, you know, based on the assumption that you have a certain electrical service already to the house that supports it, there's probably very little cost, as we've discussed.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah.
Chairperson? Correct, so I'm going to go through a thought process here, and just correct me if I'm wrong. A person opts out of the 2021 IECC building, but yet this does not pass, and we don't accept this proposal. Each builder will have to conform to the zoning standards, and insurance will have to replay, will have to pay for, in a typical, I don't know, I can't, I guess I can't say that. But that cost would, would be expected to be paid by either the homeowner or the insurance.
Yes. So if, you know, if there is a measurable cost for keeping this in, Yes. So if, you know, if there is a measurable cost for keeping this in, that cost would have to be paid for by the homeowner in the rebuild. The law and ordinances coverage, so one of the things about law and ordinances coverage is, is that every insurance, it's written differently, so we can't make an assumption that's going to apply to everybody. But in, in many cases, it covers all of your code upgrades from the time of original construction of the house. So, and then the, you know, there's a limit on how much you can get. So there's a lot of discussion about, will people use all of their law and ordinances coverage before they even get to these codes, just from standard upgrades, or will there be money left on the table? And I don't think we know, and it's probably going to vary from case to case.
Great. Any additional questions? Yeah, staff?
Since we're talking a lot about insurance, just a follow-up question on that. If, well, city council has already decided on the IECC, but if there is the decision that you can opt out, will insurance then, could there be a scenario where insurance would not cover the cost because they could argue that it's not a requirement, even for a homeowner that wants to build to the 2021? Does that make sense?
Yes, I, yeah, I completely understand the question. We've put a lot of thought and tried to get information, you know, tried to get any type of definitive information we could on that. And we've felt as staff that we're, you know, we can't get definitive information, and what the feedback we've gotten from, you know, those in the, you know, at the state level, who are in regulation of this industry and so forth, is that it's really going to depend. You know, I think as a city, as a city, we're trying to do our best to craft something that will be the most helpful for people who are trying to get those coverages. But there was really no way that we felt we could, you know, that it would apply to everybody with, we were assured it would apply to everybody, but that's the intent. And I think we'll have to see what people's experiences are as they apply it. So I know that's probably not helpful, but to, to answer your question completely, but that's, that's where we were at with city council.
Commissioner Krantz, question?
No, I had spoken too soon about the costs because I was just looking, I wanted to clarify that I was looking at, just in case anybody was concerned about the cost, I was looking at the residential cost analysis from the Group 14 study, and I just misspoke about one thing. If you adopt the, the IEC code with the amendments for natural gas, it'll be 1,900 was one builder's estimate, and 1,000 was the others. And the other one, I, when I said it was zero, that's if we don't adopt the, if we didn't include the Appendix RC. But for the all-electric, the cost would be the same. It's, so that was the estimate. So I just wanted to clear up from me speaking before.
Thanks for the clarification. All right. Any additional questions of staff at this time? And then can we check to see if there's any public comment available from Zoom? I will now open a public comment portion of the hearing. And I don't think we have any written comments on this one. Is that correct, Rob?
That's correct, no written. So I, I will say that after this ordinance was published publicly as a separate item, we received no comments. There are many, many comments in the packet for the adoption of 1825, and there, and so I did point a link out to those. And they, because again, this was all a package, there were, I mean, really hundreds of comments that could be related to this, but none specific to this ordinance after it was drafted.
Thank you.
Chair, there are no attendees waiting to speak from the public.
Okay, great. Do we have any response or closing statement? We'll let it rest at that point.
Nothing further.
Thank you very much. I will now close the public hearing, and planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to begin? How will we start towards this end of the table this time? Have any, yeah, sure, anybody actually?
No.
No? Okay. Commissioner Howe?
Yeah, I, I think it's a complicated, a little more of a complicated issue, and maybe, what, the way I'm looking at it is trying to get the best impact for the least amount of cost for everybody. And, and also engaging what kind of insurance people may have to cover certain allocations, which is complicated because it's different for everybody. When you're talking about a house, which we're not talking about right now, but I'm just using this as, as a point of discussion, point of reference, obviously it's, it's a bigger ramification. You're looking at a, a big number to, to upgrade to certain requirements. In my opinion, I think that this is a smaller number that's more manageable, and maybe you get a better impact. Hopefully one that, if we don't, if this wasn't passed, then insurances would cover. And now I don't, I can't say that because everybody's different. If, if this had the option to opt out, I think it's, is a little bit of a gray zone, and I don't know exactly how this is going to turn out in the end, where there's an opt-out in, in one for the house, and then an opt-out for other things. But I do know if there's no opt-out, then I would assume that insurances would be responsible, or, or people who didn't have insurance, homeowners would be responsible for that cost. It seems to me that this is a cost that works for the environment and, and is a small, a small cost. For some who would be upgrading their house anyway, it would be, it would even be a smaller, smaller cost. So it seems to me like a step in the right direction.
Thank you.
Could I jump in?
Yeah, sure.
I, I just want to say, I think I agree with the, the presentation that, that nothing is probably certain. But the way I see this drafted is because you have to go and certify that you're underinsured, I don't think it's going to create the situation where insurers see the, the option of the opt-out and say, now we're not going to give you ordinance coverage, because you would, you would have to basically be submitting a false certification, right? That you don't have coverage that would allow you to do this upgrade. But if you have ordinance coverage, probably you do. So I don't, I would be surprised, except in very unusual, you know, again, everyone's different. But I would be surprised, except in unusual cases, if insurance tried to play a lot of games with this. That's just sort of, that would be my hope.
Great, thank you. Any other?
I, I guess I have a, a comment or question to, to the commission too. I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm kind of inclined to support this because it seems like the, just the fact that it, that it presents this option for opting out, it gives some flexibility to the victims of the Marshall Fire. So I'm, that's, I guess I'm sort of tempted to, to lean in that direction with this. So I don't know, I'd be interested if somebody had other thoughts about it, so.
I, I certainly agree. It seems like flexibility is very important.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Osterman?
Thank you. So, so the way I'm looking at this is through the lens that the, that we already gave our decision and recommendation for the IECC opt-out. And so I'm seeing this as just still in spirit and in alignment with that decision. And, and really, it's only a technicality. The technicality is the reason why we're reviewing this. And so I think that we could debate the merits of having the, the EV provision, but I don't see this necessarily as, as that being the, what, what we're being asked to, to, to look at. So with that in mind, I, I would be in favor of approving it, just because it's very much, I see it as a technicality, and I want to follow precedent and be in alignment with our previous decision.
Great, thank you. Additional comments?
Chair, Chair Braunice, 100% agree, 100% agree with Commissioner Osterman. I mean, I, I view this as a bureaucratic, bureaucratic kind of technicality cleanup, because city council couldn't, couldn't make this change without going through planning, because it's in the zoning. So if it would have been part of the building code, we wouldn't even be here debating this. So the city council's already kind of decided that opting, you know, the ability to opt out is something that they want. So, you know, I think we're just aligning with that. So obviously in support.
Great, thank you very much, Commissioner Adiel, appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'll just add my support. I was going to echo what Commissioner Howe said about, we kind of have our hands forced in this. But I love the way that Commissioner Osterman put it. It just seems more than, it just seems like we're in line with, in the spirit of what city council's decision was already made. We are just figuring out a technicality. So I would be inclined to support this too.
Great. I also find myself in support of it at this time. I do view it as a technicality and, and in support of the spirit of where they've headed with things. That said, I would kind of give a buyer beware of, I expect in the not-too-distant future that MLS and realty listings will actually see whether a house has EV-capable or EV-ready aspect to that house. So when it comes to resale even, a couple hundred dollars now, while maybe a big burden for some, yes. It's also, you know, you could spend a couple hundred dollars more on your toilet. You could choose a toilet that's a $400 toilet over a $100 toilet. So in the big picture, it's a relatively small investment that I think will serve people quite well, if they, at a minimum to make it EV-capable. Now, what was the, just, just get the conduit and, and the panel sizing appropriate. So with that, do we have any additional final? No. Seeing that, then I would welcome a motion.
I'll recommend approval of Resolution Number 17, Series 2022. A resolution recommending approval of an ordinance amending Section 17 dot 20 dot 170, 170 dot C of the Louisville Municipal Code, allowing an alternative to installing electric-vehicle charging infrastructure as part of the rebuilding of structures significantly damaged or destroyed by the Marshall Fire.
And we have a second.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We'll give that to Commissioner Adiel. Thank you. All right, with a roll call vote, please.
Vice Chair Hefner?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Nope.
Chair Braunice?
Yes. Thank you very much. The motion carries. We now move into planning commission comments. I think I'll start in recognizing the three students who remain through the meeting, and hope that you get the extra, extra credit perhaps, above and beyond those, what was it, eight others who have left already. Does anybody else have any planning commission comments?
I'll just say it's great, great to be back here with all of you. Real pleasure.
Yeah, definitely.
I'll see you next time.
All right, great, thanks. Hold on though, we may have some staff comments here. Do we have any staff comments?
No staff comments, and we don't have anything scheduled for next month at this point, so we may have a month off. So stay tuned.
Actually, one, it's more of a question, and you can think on it. As this being our first back-in-person hybrid meeting, doing the best everyone can, given available technologies, we would love any feedback about how you think this went, what you would like to see different, any suggestions you might have about how to, how to go forward keeping this, this hybrid model going. We would love to hear from you before next month's meeting.
Great, thank you. All right then, how about a motion to adjourn? So moved? All right. So moved, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you all very much.
Thanks, all.